To now call the State Board Business Meeting to order, and I will ask Mr. Alsop to please call the roll.
Collins?
Here.
Deckin?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Fessler? Hagan? Hill? Johnson? Kilgore? LaMonta? LaRue?
Here.
Manchester?
Here.
McGuire?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Newman?
Here.
Poclar?
Shea?
Here.
Toll?
Here.
Kohler?
Here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alsop. Our first order of business today is a hearing regarding the amendment of administrative rules. I'm now going to call this public hearing to order. Ms. Singh, I will turn it over to you to provide the information on the rules that are the subject of this public hearing.
Thank you, President Kohler. Good morning, members of the board. We will proceed with the public hearing regarding the following administrative code rule actions: the amendments of OAC 3301, 1901 definitions; OAC 3301, 1902 purpose; and OAC 3301, 1903 procedures for submitting data and presenting information. I would now like to introduce Mia Yanico from the Office of the Attorney General, Chief of the Education Section.
Thank you. Ms. Singh, do you have supervision, custody, and control over the documents relevant to this rule promulgation proceeding? And have you brought those documents with you today?
Yes, I have.
Ms. Singh, if you would please refer to the documents that have been previously marked as Board Exhibits 1 through 3, I would ask that you identify each exhibit.
Board Exhibit 1 is the public notice that appears in the Register of Ohio and references the proposed rule action subject to this hearing. Board Exhibit 2 would be a true and accurate copy of the resolution adopted by the State Board of Education regarding these rules. And Board Exhibit 3 would be true and accurate copies of the rules as filed with the Joint Committee on Agency Rule Review, the Legislative Service Commission, and the Secretary of State.
President Kohler, testimony may now be received on the rules.
Thank you. Today we will entertain either oral or written testimony in opposition to or support of the rules under consideration. We are requesting that all testimony be limited to five minutes and that you conclude your testimony at the sound of the five-minute timer. When I call your name, please prepare to present your testimony. Before presenting your testimony, please state for the record the rule for which you will be presenting testimony. If you have written testimony, it's important that you provide a courtesy copy to the department. You may submit it electronically to sboe@education.ohio.gov. Should written testimony be received, it will be marked as Group Exhibit 4. We will now take testimony on the amendments of OAC 3301, 1901 definitions; OAC 3301, 1902 purpose; and OAC 3301, 1903 procedures for submitting data and presenting information. Do we have any witnesses who have requested to testify on these rules?
No, Madam President.
All right. We have no witnesses wishing to testify on the rules. Ms. Yanico, as there is no other evidence to be presented, would you like to submit the exhibits into evidence?
Thank you, President Kohler. I would like to submit into evidence State Board Exhibits 1 through 3.
Thank you. The exhibits are so received, and I declare this public hearing closed. Mr. Poclar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. If I might, I mentioned yesterday in one of the committees that I was on, just on the process for rules, and so I just thought I'd mention it in front of the full group. But to me, it seems a little out of... The order that we go in as far as reviewing rules, it seems a little odd to me that we have the 119 hearing in front of the full board after the board approves the rules. And I just suggested to legal counsel for that committee to maybe look at that and see if there's a way to change that. It's just, I mean, I think the public participation is important, but it seems like you would want to, if you can, have that before the board votes. If not, I don't know why the board would need to hear public testimony on something that's already voted on. It just seems, you know, it's voted, it's done. So I just recommend kind of looking at the process. It seems a little bit wonky to me. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate that observation. I think that, I think you've raised an excellent point and a very good question, and so I would ask that Ms. Singh and Ms. Yanico perhaps be prepared to address the issue and answer Mr. Poclar's question, and if it is appropriate, perhaps suggest a reordering of the process. And if you could have that prepared for us in time for our next meeting, we would appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Shea?
Thank you, President Kohler. I have a motion that I would like to bring before the board prior to public participation. Can I expound on it, or do I just need to name the motion?
I'm going to have to consult, because normally our procedure is that that type of a motion would be made with new business, but is it directly relevant to the public participation?
I believe it is. Yep.
All right. Let's take a five-minute recess, and I'll ask Mr. Shea, will you be with me and Ms. Singh, and we'll figure out the correct way to handle this?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We will reconvene our meeting at this point, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Upon consultation with legal counsel, I have determined that Mr. Shea's request is out of order, and we would be happy to consider it at the appropriate point in the agenda.
My name is Jocelyn Copick. I'm from Medina County. I am a taxpayer, and I would like to publicly support Jenny Kilgore and John Hagan's resolution, which I have here, voting item number 24, but I guess that's wrong information. But anyway, I prepared something for today based on the resolution that was put forward. I think it is imperative to hear the parents' voices, the taxpayers of the children in the education system. And you do know the education system is funded by the taxpayers. The education of our nation's children should be done with a respectful, open dialogue between the parents and the public schools' elected and appointed officials, along with the public school staff and faculty. When agenda items are being introduced to our children without parents' consent, it gives that message that something nefarious is going on. And there is, in fact, something nefarious going on. I will share with you that I am a huge advocate for the safety and well-being of our children, and I do not take this position lightly. I have knocked on over 10,000 doors in the past five years and stood at the door of a complete stranger, a fellow American, and cried together over the loss of their children to this evil indoctrination process that is going on in our education system. Now, that's the three words I am not allowed to speak is "we, the people," is, I'm sorry, the words that must not be spoken, is nefarious. And we, the people and parents, are on to it. And we will do what is necessary to protect and defend our children and the future of our nation. We, the people, know the realities. A presence of white supremacy in our schools is not a reality. This is an elusive phrase to get white people to bow down to an agenda to completely destroy our nation's education system, as well as our nation as a whole. We know that those three words is a blame-shifting tactic. We know that those three words is a planned scheme to further enrich the lives of the people who are pushing it. These people are geniuses at finding, creating, making up problems they can solve to take more money from us taxpayers. We know the same people crying racism also support people like Kermit Gosnell, an infamous abortion doctor. When asked why there were separate rooms for blacks and whites, he replied in 2013 that that's just the way it is. An abortion doctor who is guilty of heinous acts was protected by the same people pushing those three words. When white people walked into Gosnell's office, they were counseled and given 24 hours to make that final decision, because that was the law. Non-whites were given a pill the moment they walked into his office and walked out within hours, no longer pregnant. And sadly, some non-whites never walked out of his office. How did he get away with such racism? Well, Dr. Gosnell is black. Studies show that 14.5 million black babies had been aborted since 1973, when Roe v. Wade was passed, which is more than all other causes of black deaths combined. Our children have nothing to do with that. The nation's children are victims. We know the reality of the abortion industry, and that is the most profitable industry in the world, right along with human trafficking. Abortion enriches the lives of the people who are pushing those three words. We also know the facts about the education in the inner cities, where the majority of black students attend, no school choice. Tax dollars explicitly collected for our children's education, but instead go into the pockets of people pushing those three-letter words, those three words. The people pushing those words are responsible for the poor education system in our inner cities, not our children. The children are victims. We know the facts about black-on-black crime that the people pushing those three words don't care about. They only care about crimes of white-on-black, because it fits the narrative, which is significantly less statistically than black-on-black crime.
Excuse me, Mrs. Copick?
How are children responsible for that? They're not, they're victims. And one more, finally. We know that you know, and I 100% support a partnership between parents and all persons involved in our nation's education system. I also support the accountability to the fullest extent of the law of any person using their position in the education system to endanger our children and this nation. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Dr. Collins has a question for you. Dr. Collins?
I got it. Well, I will say thank you for coming and speaking today. I noticed 95% of your testimony was not what was submitted to the board. I also, we had an email exchange a couple months ago, and you said, from kindergarten to fifth grade, you've chosen to private school, and this past year you homeschooled your child. When have you gone into the local public schools to find out what has actually been taught to public school children? And if you have done that, have you spoken at your local Board of Education meetings? Thank you.
Your first comment was, oh, 95... Well, I didn't submit all of it, because the last time I did, you guys denied me, and I wanted my voice to be heard, because I have that constitutional right. And second, yes, I did private school my daughter, because, one, we financially can, but a lot of people can't, and that doesn't mean that I should ignore everybody else. I do know what's going on. I have friends in the public school. And like I said, not just my friends, people in my circles, but I knocked on 10,000 doors, plus, I mean, I could be close to 15,000. And I've talked to people in the public schools. And you know what? My daughter was indoctrinated, and I paid $10,000 a year to have her indoctrinated by a Catholic school in Virginia Beach. So I know what's going on. Any more questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Fessler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is Mrs. Copick?
Copick, it's fine.
And then it turns off. There we go. Good morning. Thank you for being here this morning. I presume that you, at the beginning of your testimony, you were saying those three words, and those three words meaning critical race theory?
Yes.
And you can't say those words, but I can be in the same room and say those words. Is that your point there?
Well, I don't know. I don't agree with it. I just don't, I just wanted to get my point across, and everyone knows what I'm talking about, so it really didn't matter if I said it or not.
Well, thank you for speaking up.
Thank you.
It's always good to hear the opinions of all people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fessler?
Yes. I will.
Here today. Dr. Miranda?
Thank you for your testimony. I just want to clear some things up, because you say this with such authority and knowledge. But I want to say that my children went to an urban school district, Columbus City Schools. I thought they got a great education. I have a son that is special ed, got a great education. So the things you're talking about that are happening in urban schools, I did not see it. I spent a lot of time in urban schools. I know many children in Columbus City Schools that got a great education, got full rides to colleges. So I just want to say that I have direct experience in an urban school district. I live in the city, and so I do take offense to some of your statements with such authority that these things are happening. I, so I just want to set the record straight that that was not my experience, and I have many friends who went to urban school districts that did not have the experience and walked away with very positive experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Board Member Kilgore, followed by Board Member Johnson. Dr. Kilgore?
Thank you for coming. Took courage. So as a board, we're here to advocate for students, we all know this, and that includes public school students, we all know this. And I believe that the public school system is in place to give a good education, and we all know this. I would confirm that subjects are taught through a lens of critical race theory in the public school system, because I teach young people who aspire to be teachers. I do acknowledge that it's different in different school districts because of the administration and the community input. And I want to say that the base of consistency or change comes from the community. And I really want to thank you for your courage, for speaking out, for your opinion, and we need to hear all sides of the issue, and yours is one, certainly, and appreciate you adding that to our resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Copick?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I want to thank you for being here today. Since you didn't send in all your testimony, I can't really check back to confirm what you had said. So could you repeat the sentence you said about choice not being available in urban school districts or something? Did you say something like that? I heard "choice" and "urban" in the same sentence, and I'm trying to confirm.
Well, I didn't use the word "urban," but I did use the word "inner city."
Okay.
So I guess it's pretty much the same.
Repeat that sentence for me, please.
Sure. And I can give you a copy if you'd like.
No, I don't need a copy.
I said, "We also know the facts about education in the inner cities, where the majority of black students attend, no school choice."
Okay, that's what I thought you said. That's incorrect. And so, you know, it's one thing, you're entitled to your opinion, but there is plenty of school choice in what you're calling inner-city districts. And I think you need to check with the Ohio Department of Education to get the correct information.
Well, do you think that...
So by school choice, do you mean charter schools and vouchers and so forth? We might be having a different interpretation of school choice. What do you mean when you say school choice?
Well, I'm talking about the students or the children that come from broken families, and they don't know their choices. Whether the choices are available, of course, is private school, and you can apply for aid to go to private school, but that's on the parents. And we all know that some of the parents are not capable of doing that because of, one, they're drug addicts, or, I mean, those are just the... I know it's hard to hear this, but it's reality. It's really unfortunate.
It's not difficult for me to hear that, but it's an uncomfortable stereotype for you to say that some of the parents in the inner-city schools are drug addicts.
Well, they are.
So that's, I think it's inappropriate. Well, we have drug addicts all over, suburban, rural, everywhere.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure that, since this is a public meeting, that people know that there is school choice defined by the Ohio Department of Education in inner-city school districts. So I just wanted to make sure that I made that statement.
Thank you. We have two minutes remaining on our opportunities to ask questions. I have Mr. Hagan and Mr. Shea and Ms. Hill, and that will conclude our questioning. I'd ask you to be succinct, so we can stick to our 10-minute mark. Mr. Hagan?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I certainly appreciate your passion. You know, being someone who's run for office throughout my life, knocking on doors is not always the most comfortable thing to do, and 10,000 is a great number. So thank you for your passion and your efforts to see that children have a chance. One thing I will say is that different communities have different ideas about how things should be done and what they want their children taught. But I think that when you mention critical race theory, all of us that are being honest with ourselves understand that a lot of the tenants of that theory are being promoted throughout the state and even promoted by this department. So I'm glad you're here to speak up about this. I certainly appreciate also your comments about the abortion issues and how it affects certain communities. You're welcome here anytime, in my opinion, and I will continue to strive for people to be able to speak their mind and say what they want to say in this forum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Mr. Shea?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you as well for being here. I first wanted to say, I think we really should be careful not to give the impression that we're just pushing people back to the local level. Obviously, I encourage folks to be active, as you have been, it sounds like, at the local level, knocking on 10,000 doors. But we want to hear from people. So thank you for being here. My question is, if you could briefly mention some examples of what you call indoctrination? I know a lot of folks are looking for examples. I know that was at a private school, but I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that there's not a lot of similar things happening. We're talking about federal dollars that go to private schools and public schools, grants. We're also talking about some of the same programs, some of the same training programs that are brought in. I mean, you can look it up, literally the same folks that are leading these programs. Can you briefly give a few examples?
Yeah. Actually, if I could get my phone, I know we're on limited time. I have a list. So my daughter, right there, it was in 2015, right before the 2016 election, when Hillary was running against President Trump. I don't know if I can find it quick, but she was coming home and saying, my daughter is a huge storyteller. She is all day long telling stories. And she was incorporating this stuff, I guess, that she was picking up in school, because we certainly weren't talking about it at home. And I don't let her watch YouTube. She's not on social media. She's in books. She reads books four-plus hours a day. I mean, she read the entire Harry Potter series in two weeks. So she is a reader. She was coming home and saying, I'm going to go off memory, because I don't want to use up too much time looking for it on my phone. But she was coming home saying stuff like, "The president is our mom, and we cannot, we can only think bad things about her, but we can't say bad things." She was saying stuff like, "The children from Haiti are the luckiest kids on earth because they didn't have any toys." She was saying stuff like, "People, humans, live like animals." Those are, I, there's literally a long list. I just can't think of any off the cuff, just because of the moment I'm in right now. But there was a lot of indoctrination going on.
Thank you. I'd welcome you to submit, encourage you to submit some examples, you know, for written testimony another time.
Absolutely.
Thank you again.
Thank you. And we will conclude with a question from Board Member Hill.
Thank you. I have a question for the leadership and those that are part of the leadership of the process of our board. And the question is, in the past, couldn't individuals who wanted to speak to the board come in on the day of public testimony, not have submitted written testimony, fill out a form, and speak to the board?
I'm going to ask Mr. Goodman, who manages the process for us, to respond to that question.
That is correct. Individuals can show up and testify that day and then fill out a form for us.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for being here. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker this morning is Mark Paquita, another name I may have mispronounced. Oh, good. Mr. Paquita, again, you'll have five minutes. If you would share, please, what part of the state you're from, that's always helpful to the board, and we welcome you.
Sure. The last name is Paquita. It rhymes with the banana brand, Chiquita, so Paquita-Chiquita. My nickname has been Banana since I was like that high. Sometimes other words were added to it in high school. My name is Mark Paquita, excuse me, and I live in Dublin. I'm here as a father and a grandfather, fed up with the arrogance, impotence, and timidity of all of you to not simply admit an error on your part, but instead debate a resolution to request a formal opinion of the Attorney General on your past equity resolution of July 2020. That 2020 equity resolution reads like a manifesto of a street mob. It has stoked division and ignores the real history of the state of Ohio. of the state of Ohio. The current Attorney General resolution is a cop-out and inseparable from the equity resolution. The equity resolution starts with these words. "As our nation grapples with the hard truths of racism and inequality, imagine if you had started with, 'The only race that should matter in Ohio K-12 education is the race to enable all children to reach full potential.'" There, and I expose your pandering and your racism. The children and grandchildren of Ohioans could care less about race. They have moved forward while you seek to pull them back. Later, you had this line. "The State Board of Education believes that public schools are fundamental to our democratic society, and we must be dedicated to equity and thoughtful teaching of future citizens that racism, bigotry, and hatred have no place." I want to stress the use of the word "democratic." First, we live in a republic. It might be nice, as the leaders in education, to get our form of government correct. How about uniting with words like this? "The State Board of Education believes that every school in Ohio must be committed to enabling all Ohio children, regardless of race, sex, socioeconomic status, disability, or faith, to reach their full educational potential in an environment devoid of bigotry and bias." In your hateful resolution, you took time to refer directly to a white supremacy culture. I'm white. And while I can find a few narrow-minded individuals and bigots of all races, I do not know where this white supremacy culture resides. All the whites I know abhor bigotry. They abhor racism. They are part of an honorable Ohio, an Ohio that has a tradition of being at the forefront of equality. Let's talk about a few facts. Over 300,000 Ohioans fought in the Civil War. Over 11,000 gave their lives. Ohioan Ulysses S. Grant single-handedly saved the Union in our most important moment of truth. A white Ohioan proved that we could, do, and will live up to our founding principles. Not just that all men are created equal, but that Americans always strive to be a more perfect Union. That is not a Black, Brown, or a White struggle. It's an American struggle. But also, what about the Underground Railroad, whose northern trunk line was Ohio? Part of a culture in Ohio that has been there when it was needed. Let me be clear. George Floyd should never have died, but he was not engaged in noble activity when he did. He was committing a crime. What of the 11,000 Ohioans who died in a noble cause, the Civil War? Did you forget them as you pandered in your equity resolution? Your equity resolution is horribly drafted, inept on history, poorly vetted, and repeatedly racist in its dog whistle for the left language. It looks for a scapegoat while ignoring that family composition, home environment. Education of parents and income levels are more determinative of outcomes than race by at least 100 times. Your equity resolution misdiagnoses the fundamental and actionable issues in favor of pandering and scapegoating. What really has more impact? White supremacy, racism, and implicit bias? Or parents, whatever their race, who have not prepared...
Mr. Pakita, you've reached the five-minute mark. I'm going to ask you to offer your concluding thought.
My concluding thought is, who will make a motion under your emergency Rule 9B to do away with Resolution 20? Who will make a second? This can't wait. We, the people, need to see where you and Governor Mike DeWine stand on the record today. And if you do not act in a serious way versus your Dave Yost comedy resolution, we will know your answer.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for this speaker? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome.
I am very proud of Resolution 20, as you call it. I just wanted to make that statement. I was trying to follow along on your testimony, and we have three different pages, so I couldn't find the statement I was looking for. But you said something about "children and someone could care less about race," or something like that. Could you, could you repeat that sentence? Children and... I'm sorry, I'm not repeating it. But I know you said "could care less about race." And I wanted to see if you could repeat that sentence.
I said that kids and grandkids of Ohioans could care less about race. They have moved forward while we seek to pull them back.
That's the statement. How do you know that?
I'm 62 years old, and I'm active in the community.
But my community, the people in my community care a lot about race because they are discriminated against because of their race.
How are they discriminated against?
You really want the list?
I do want the list.
Redlining, they, their communities...
Redlining? Redlining's been gone since the 70s.
Wait, wait, excuse me. You asked me a question. I'm going to answer your question, so please don't interrupt me, okay?
Okay.
Redlining, meaning that banks were able to draw lines around certain communities in which they chose not to present loans to them. And if you drive through Cleveland, you can see a number of those redlined communities now because the people who live there have not been able to come out of those communities because they're not able to get the kind of funding they need to improve their quality of life. School segregation, discrimination, where we have some communities, because of property taxes, which in itself was a racist way of funding schools. Students are not able to get the kind of resources they want. We have mass incarceration, in which we had different laws provided for white people who were using cocaine, who used it basically the same as Black people. But Black people, Black people got much longer prison sentences than white people. We talk about the G.I. Bill, on how the G.I. Bill was very selectively provided for white people and was not provided for Black people in the same way. We talk about health disparities, in which people who go into hospitals are treated, not treated, Black people are not treated in the same professional manner, in many cases, as white people, and the list goes on and on. So when you say, when you make a statement like, "Kids and children," or whatever, "could care less about race," I understand that may be true in your experiences as a 16, 62-year-old man, but in my experience, it's not true. So that's why I was challenging you on that statement.
You do realize that you can't come up with any data on anything you just listed. Redlining has been, redlining has been illegal since like the 1980s, okay? And the incarcerations that you talk about, they're not factual. Most of the people that are in jail for long sentences were pled down from more significant trafficking sentences. I understand this data. I've been studying it for like five years. And you're smiling smugly over there, but you don't have any factual data on any of those topics. I would, I would, I would challenge you to send me that list. I'll send you my data, and you send me yours.
Yes.
Trying to remember your name. Mr.?
Pakita.
Pakita, yes. I'm not going to send you the data because it's really available if you just Google it.
That's the answer from everybody that has no data.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to take the time to do that, but I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Just, just one final response to that. The Public School Review...
Sir, thank you. One second. We have another question from a board member. The way this format works, board members ask questions, and you answer them.
But they, but if they, Madam President, if they make a contention, I'm not allowed to respond?
You had an opportunity to respond, and Ms. Johnson then concluded her remarks. I'm going to turn to Dr. Collins.
Thank you. I do, I just have a couple of statements. First, I want to say to Board Member Johnson, there's been a lot recently about the responsibility felt by Black people to have to sit in rooms filled with white people and defend an entire race and to have to wear that on their shoulders. And I feel like the discussion that just occurred and the rudeness with which Member Johnson was addressed shows exactly that Black responsibility that, that, that population is feeling, according to research. That being said, throughout your testimony, you comment on left agendas and right agendas and conservatives and, and lots of statements about the politicization of education. I just want to say, data is not left or right. And our educational data in Ohio tells us that there is extreme gaps between Black students specifically and all other groups of students. We see the gap slowly closing. We've been working hard on that. But this resolution, you mentioned another point here. You mentioned parents and the parent's role in education. We, as a Board of Education and educators as a whole, can only control what happens within the bounds of the school building. That's it. We can't control parents, and our resolutions can't control parents. But what we can do is make suggestions to districts and schools to be more intentional about what they're doing, to look for instances of bias in their curriculum, and to just pay attention. And that is what that resolution asks the school districts to do. That being said, we are a local-control state. So that resolution may be a guiding document put out by the Board before me, before my time, but local districts are in control of what they choose to do at the local level. So we have to take together all these pieces here. What's within our bounds of control? What does the data tell us? And what should we be doing to help move education forward? And I'm sorry, again, data is not left or right. Data just is. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I agree with you that data just is. And another one of your board members doesn't want to share data with me so we can have a discussion on that topic.
All right. And we're, we're going to request civility and...
How have I been uncivil?
And seek understanding. And I'm moving on here to Mr. LaRue. Oh, sorry.
I haven't had to.
I'm on. Okay. Fantastic. I appreciate you coming out today. I am a history major, and I love talking history. And I love the fact you brought up the Civil War. I wish as a society, or whatever, we can celebrate both the contributions of Black and white Civil War soldiers. You probably know 5,092 Black Ohioans served in the Civil War. In fact, there were four Medal of Honor recipients, the most of any Civil War regiment was the Fifth, which was a regiment from Ohio. And I, and I love the fact you bring up President Grant, okay? I also like the fact, when we talk about the Underground Railroad, that was a partnership of Black and white conductors. You're probably familiar with John Rankin in Ripley. You may or may not be familiar also that there were Black conductors who brought folks across the river. John Parker probably being the most famous. If you ever go to Ripley, you should go to the John Parker House on the River and then go to the John Rankin House on the Hill. I struggle, as a former history teacher, that we can't celebrate the victories and the, you know, the success. That's not to say we need to ignore things, but we need to talk about. We always talk about it's one or the other. You know, what you're talking about. And I, I mean, again, I appreciate you bringing up the Civil War. I talk all day about the Civil War. I generally don't talk a lot in these meetings, but I, I will, I'll talk all day about the Civil... But, but we need to find the ability to celebrate the successes that are part of both our Black and white communities as well as things that we need to work on. So anyhow, I appreciate what you're doing. I just wish when we talked about these things, we talked about the Black and white Underground Railroad conductors and the Black and white Ohioans who made the ultimate sacrifice in war. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hagan?
Mr. Pakita, I would make a few suggestions in your presentation. You know, coming in with the guns ablazing and attacking everyone in the room is kind of a dumb approach, okay? I know you're running for office, and I imagine that you probably think that you can use this as something to benefit your race. But let me suggest that, first of all, there are several members in this room that didn't vote for the resolution that you talked about. There are also several members in the room that will support my resolution, which you have condemned, to send this to the, or to the Attorney General for analysis. You know, I know you, you apparently think you're the smartest man in the room, and that's, that's your prerogative. But let me just suggest that a little humility would be in order in that your civil issue here with the way you've approached this is rightfully pointed out. So although I agree with a lot of what you had to say, I would suggest that you may want to refine your approach and also realize that people that are on your side don't need to be attacked, and that usually doesn't do anything for your overall picture. So thank you for being here. Thank you for some of your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Let me just make one comment about going to the Attorney General. Do you not think that, just by the fact you have to take this to the Attorney General, that it's flawed?
Yes. Would you like to respond, Mr. Hagan? Please go ahead.
And that is why I'm doing that. If you've read my resolution, you're aware that the Attorney General and 19 other states' Attorney General have sent a letter to the Federal Department of Education in reference to some of the very similar grant push that's coming down to the states from the current administration. They are declaring in their letter that they believe it to be illegal, both in state law and federal law, and I agree. And so that being said, our Attorney General, being a signer on that letter, it's a no-brainer that he should be looking at what this Board passed a year ago and pointing out if it's not legal so that it can be addressed.
Why not just use the emergency powers of the Board and...
You, you need to take a look at the Board before you make these assumptions. There's, there's no advantage to putting resolutions forward that fail. So there are logical steps to take to get things done. And sometimes, the bull in the china shop is not the right approach.
So are you suggesting I'm the bull in the china shop?
I, I definitely would classify you as a bull in the china shop, yes.
I think that there are two types of anger. Biblically, there's righteous anger, and there's rage. Rage is wishing for ill will on someone or some society. That's not what I have here. I've got two grandchildren. I've got four grandnephews. And I believe that their future is in peril, as is the peril, as is the, the, the future of every child, not only in Ohio, but this nation, because of thinking like what was in that resolution. So you may not like my style, but I think that there are people So you may not like my style, but I think that there are people who are afraid of being canceled. There are people who are afraid of having their children bullied. I'm fortunate to be in the place where I can't be canceled because there's nothing to cancel, and I'm pretty much a nobody. So I'm standing up for those people that can't do it.
Thank you very much for that. I'm going to allow Mr. Hagan to have a response. We are over the 10-minute mark, so this will be the end of the discussion. Oops, let me try.
Well, I cannot do you on the grandchildren. I've got 11.
Wow. God bless you and them.
For children, yes, you know, for our political views, my children and grandchildren have been victimized by systems. That is the norm. That's, you know, fighters put up with that. You know, we deal with that because we want to have, you know, our view heard. And, you know, when you think you're right, you're willing to fight for what is right, and that's what I have always done. I've never been concerned about being canceled, and I don't think there's anyone in the room other than you maybe that would think that. So I just want you to understand that...tone it down. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us this morning.
Thank you, Madam President.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Cox. Good morning, and welcome to you, Mr. Cox. I'll remind you, as I... Have everyone about the five-minute time limit, and if you could share your name and the part of the state you're from, we would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Jeremy Cox. I am a veteran and taxpayer of Green County, Ohio. And today, I would like to take the opportunity to comment on Item 24 on the agenda. The resolutions request a formal opinion of the Attorney General of Ohio in reference to the State Board of Education's resolution to condemn racism and to advance equity and opportunity. Now, since discrimination on the basis of race is illegal by federal law, and equal opportunity is enshrined in both the Declaration of Independence and the U.S. Constitution, asking for a legal opinion on the goal of equity makes perfect sense to determine, one, if it means equality or merely the sameness of outcome, and, two, if it contradicts the goal of opportunity, which is to maintain the level of playing field so that each individual can achieve whatever goal he or she is willing to apply his or her talent and energy to accomplish. If equal outcome for each student is the goal, what does that mean for our schoolchildren? Does it mean eliminating advanced classes so that everyone ends up with the same education, regardless of talent and energy and work ethic? If so, then teaching will indeed become easier for educators, as the expectation is that all students would end up with the same level of knowledge and identical attitudes. The goal of the Ohio Department of Education ought to be to promote equality of opportunity, not equality of outcomes. My point in all this is that advocating for equity of outcome is a lie perpetuated on the people and a concept diametrically opposed to everything the United States of America stands for. If you truly believe in equity, then maybe you should immediately reduce the pay of all Ohio Department of Education employees to one equitable amount, because after all, the goal is equality of outcomes, is it not? This concludes my remarks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming in under the time limit. Are there any questions for our speaker this morning? Yes, Dr. Collins.
First, I'd like to thank you for being here. Much, much better testimony here. I'm glad you're raising this point because having been in education, my entire career has been in education. I don't know how long that's been, but it's been in education. And the definition of equity that is taught to teacher educators is not the way it's been used in recent months, which has been this equality of outcomes thing. See, equity has existed in federal legislation since 1965, originally for students with special needs. And the idea that students with special needs should be given what they need in order to have access to education. So as a low-level example, if a student needs glasses to be able to see a book, they should have glasses, because that's equity. That's equitable access to learning. Now, that doesn't guarantee that that student is going to be able to read what's put in front of them. That would be the outcomes piece of that. The equality of outcomes that you're mentioning would be that all students are going to score a perfect score on the state achievement exams, or that all students are going to graduate with the same level of knowledge and understanding to go into the workforce. That's not the case. But what equity means is that we, as educators, make sure everyone has the ability to be successful. Everyone has the ability to reach those opportunities. So again, the glasses. And something that's come up here a lot frequently is food insecurity. We've been talking about federal food programs, and the question that Member Hagan has asked is, why are all students getting food? Why not just the students who need food? That's equity, when we feed the kids who need to be fed so that they can access quality education. So given that that's the definition that is taught to teachers in their teacher ed programs, and it's the definition that is used by the federal government, why are we seeing this from two very diametrically opposed positions? Because this definition, this equality of outcomes, it makes no sense to me as an educator. It's not even in my purview. So I'm having a hard time understanding where it's coming from and what that even means.
Right. And I think the issue is not, no one's concerned about children being given glasses who need glasses. The issue is, as I said in my presentation, if students, will advanced classes be cut so as to bring people down so that all students can understand and get the same education? That's the issue. Will they have the same level of base knowledge? No one's concerned about children being given glasses who need glasses. I absolutely agree that that needs to happen. That's the issue is, will someone who is very outgoing, very energetic, very academically inclined, will they no longer be able to take advanced classes because by giving them advanced classes, then other people might not be able to, who don't have the same talents? That's the issue.
And that's a great example, because I've seen an image making its way around the circuits that shows what we've always known as the equity image in education was the image of the kids on boxes and the fence, and they're looking over the fence, and that there's different-sized boxes so that all kids can see over the fence. But the image that I've seen in some media has been a white student dug into the ground with a shovel next to them that says CRT, as if to say that we have to take away from one population in order for other populations to be successful. With your example with AP classes, we have data that shows us that Black students don't trend into honors and AP classes the same as white students. That does not mean we take away honors and AP classes, because that is doing a disservice to those students, and that's not part of what we do in education. But what we need to do is pay more attention and give better supports to the Black students who aren't making it into those classes, to find out why aren't they making it, and what do we need to do differently in education? So in my sphere of influence, as far as education, teaching at the college level, working with educators, and having been in education my entire career, it's never been about taking away from anyone so much as it is building up those other students. It's giving the glasses. We can all agree, a student who needs glasses needs them, but it's harder for us to think through, a Black student needs different supports to lift them up. So that's, I think, we have a very different view on that.
And that to me, that's the, I would call that the racism of low expectations, in my view. But I, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a question from Board Member Shay. Oops.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Cox. Thank you for being here. Good to see you, constituent from Green County, right?
Green County, yes, sir.
Okay, well, welcome. I just wanted to make the point, I appreciate some of what Dr. Collins had to say, but we are seeing attempts to restructure, for instance, math standards that I think have the effect of kind of lowering, you know, kind of finding the lowest common denominator. That's what it amounts to. So it might not be as overt as Dr. Collins is suggesting, but I think in practice that we are seeing a movement in that direction. Different states and some of the announcements that have been made and the push we're seeing, particularly in math standards. So I just wanted to raise that point. But thank you again for being here and look forward to seeing you back in Green County.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Shay, could I ask just a clarifying question? Are you seeing that happening to math standards in Ohio, or are you speaking generally?
Thank you, President Kohler. I'm not suggesting Ohio. I'm suggesting that there's a, generally, and that there's a national conversation in this direction. That's my suggestion.
Our next board member to speak will be Mrs. Hill.
Thank you, President Kohler, and thank you, Mr. Cox. I do want to follow up on the question that the President just asked of Mr. Shay. In April of 2021, there was an article in the Akron Beacon Journal titled "Change Agents: Stowe Educational Consultant Aims to Bring Equity Empowerment to Math Class." And the featured person in that was a woman, her last name is Yoke, and she's the Director of the Ohio Council of Teachers of Math. And this is directly from the Akron Beacon Journal, whose two main goals right now are to support math teachers in learning and to promote policies and practices that support equity inclusiveness in math. And then further down, over-representation of white students and often Asian students. And in the lower tracks, we have an over-representation of students of color. And then further on the article, eliminating tracking and replacing it with student-focused, equity-centered, and reasoning-based math experience. So there is a proposal by someone who leads in the math community to make changes to math in Ohio. Thank you.
My question was really about the standards that this Board is responsible for. So thank you for providing that example of what's happening in a district. Okay. Are there any other questions at this point? If not, sir, we will thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate your time and your ideas.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Certainly. The next item of business is that of public participation on non-voting agenda items. And again, as a reminder, individuals are not permitted to address the Board on matters that have been or will be the subject of an administrative hearing, including territory transfer or personnel actions. We do have one member who is going to testify this morning on non-voting agenda items, and it is our own former board member and colleague, Lisa Woods. Welcome, Lisa. And you already know this part about the five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. And good morning, board members. I miss working with you, and I'm pleased to be here today to offer public testimony on the topic of priorities. Ohio's education system is a feeder system into jobs and careers in higher education. Ohio has 100,000 jobs open, but there are too many Ohioans that lack the skills needed to fill those jobs. This is a true crisis, and I do hope that the Board considers strongly, listening to the consumer base and focused like a laser beam on the needs of our parents, students, and employers. Jobs and careers have been shifting overseas for years. One of the reasons for this shift is the lack of trained workforce. With billions of taxpayer dollars spent at the local, state, and federal levels for children K through 12, we simply have a responsibility to use those enormous resources to stem the tide. Experts predict a loss of 75 million jobs worldwide by the next year due to technology. From robot pizza delivery to driverless trucks displacing humans, even basic entry-level jobs are at risk. However, all is not doom and gloom. Our economy still needs people. So here are the priorities I would like, I would hope that ODE would push and suggest local boards of education to prioritize as well. Back to the basics. There is still nothing more important than a student's life as the basic skills of proper English skills, the ability to write and put together cohesive thoughts, mathematics of the traditional mode that relies on brain power, not computing. To encourage thought, science skills that allows students to comprehend and master the scientific method. Additionally, a consistent program of gymnastics to keep students sharp and in shape. In 2017, the Pentagon reports that 71% of young people are either physically or mentally unfit for the military. Think about that. Being prepared for the military is not significantly different than being prepared for college or work world. We have a problem that needs to be addressed. Second, only 36% of young people aged 18 to 24 were proud to be Americans, according to the polling from Technometrika Market Intelligence, conducted from June 30 through July 2. Compare that to 86% of adults over 65 who are proud to be Americans. It is not hard to realize that this is driving these disparities and sharp divisions and abnormalities. A focus on civic history and a return to the underpinnings of our country's history, understanding American exceptionalism and Western civilization are long overdue. While these topics have been either eliminated, marginalized, or tragically reinterpreted by Howard Zinn's model of established anti-Americanism, the damage that these curricula in teaching are doing to American schoolchildren is profound. Employers are asking for much different priorities. Employers consistently state the obvious, that graduates lack the following: critical thinking or problem-solving, adaptability and flexibility, communication, leadership, innovation, and creativity. This is achievable. Critical thinking is fostered by robust teaching and challenging students, not feeding them a steady stream of false teachings about racial and human sexuality, being pounded into our kids' heads, causing them not to think straight and hate their country. Adaptability and flexibility means independence, not conformance. Communication means a command of the King's English and how to speak and write eloquently. Leadership is brought about through achievement and related to having high standards and challenging curricula, being physically and mentally fit. Innovation and creativity are fostered by having the basic building blocks as a starter. Let's allow students to think for themselves while teaching them without social and political agendas. Parents are flocking to school board meetings. They are taking aback that the priorities of our public schools foster hatred, division, false blame by breaking kids into camps. We are not of camps. We never had a caste system. We have the same opportunities. That is why we have a free system of public education, and each child learns to statewide standards. Education is supposed to be the great equalizer. Let us make it so again by a singular focus on basic and listening to the Ohio parents, students, and employers. These are my priorities. I hope they are yours, and I hope this fosters debate to listen to the parents and the employers of Ohio. Hear them and heed their call. Education can spark an Ohio Renaissance or a new Dark Age. Let's follow the course of the Renaissance.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Are there any questions for our guests today? Yes, Ms. Newman.
There we go. Thank you, President Kohler. Thank you, Ms. Woods, for coming today to speak. I think one of the questions I'm really putting... I think one of the questions, I'm really putting on my active listening hat today, and I'm really trying to better understand what is being discussed and try to see if we can begin using some of the same language. Dr. Collins, I appreciated you, like, really looking at the definitions of words, you know. Equity, equality. And so I want to reference one of the lines in your testimony that says, "Critical thinking or problem-solving, adaptability, flexibility, communication, leadership, innovation, and creativity are all achievable and necessary for Ohio students." And then I kind of want to put this next to Mr. Paquita's statement where I wrote it down, to where he said we need to talk about the real history of the state of Ohio. And so to me, these things come at each other from opposite angles, to where, who is the body that decides what is the real history? And how do we encourage our children to think critically, question things, be adaptable, and learn to have hard discussions about a variety of viewpoints? And I feel today's testimony has been incredibly challenging, but I appreciate the level of growth it can bring for each one of us as we listen and we can have these discussions about what works best for Ohio's children. But I do ask, when you say, "Let's allow students to think for themselves while teaching them without social and political agenda," how are we deciding on what doesn't have an agenda or does have an agenda? How do we allow our children to think critically if we don't give them the space to do so? And I feel like by giving a full and robust picture of history and not the right history with events left out, does not allow our children to achieve this. And so my question is, how do we allow for critical thinking if we really are saying we only want to teach a real history?
That's a big, a good and long question. We want to teach a real history. And there's historians that, you know, and white and black and of all nationalities that have criticized, you know, some of the things that are coming through with the 1619 Project and the implications of critical race theory. I mean, when you really dig, these are Marxists, these are mind-controlling, we are teaching our kids to conform, and that we're doing it in the way that we're teaching them. I absolutely support, you know, the teaching of real history, you know, that we had black soldiers fighting and how many that we had that fought, lived or died here in Ohio. I think that's incredible that we have to teach that, but we have to teach that with pride and to look back at where we have come to. And I would just say that I'm asking for real history. That does bring real thinking and debate. We don't want to tell them, one of the biggest problems that I'm seeing is that the way that we're teaching it is that we're starting to point fingers and put blame on certain people and races and things like that. And the truth is, here in Ohio, we came together. We came together and we voted Abraham Lincoln in and, you know, fought this war with people of all colors, and that's real history. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm starting to, you know, I think that is real history. It's just how you teach it. And don't teach it with blame and pointing fingers at one race or another. The kids today, you know, they have no fault of what any ancestors did at any time on the face of this world.
So thank you for clarifying on that. And I think that's the question I'm asking. Everything that's been brought up today in testimony is real history. Nobody's saying that that did not happen, but there's a lot of other things that happened too.
There's some false history. There is absolutely false history, falsehoods that have been admitted by...
Can I complete my thoughts?
Yes.
Thank you. There are parts of our history that we're not necessarily proud of, but that doesn't mean they're not real. And we can have honest discussions about those. And this idea that we're making people feel shame and blame, I think, is very unfounded.
Oh, it is founded.
I'm still speaking.
Sorry.
That I feel that our children and our teachers and our administrators have the ability and wherewithal to have honest and open discussions within our classrooms to allow children the idea for critical thought while learning what our history looks like and talking about the things we're not proud of and making that not real just because it makes us squirm a little bit is not teaching real history. And so I feel like we can approach these topics, not make our kids feel shame and weird. And I just, I feel like it's not giving credit to our children, it is not giving credit to our teachers, and it is not giving credit to the work that is being done here. So that's all I have to say.
Let's see. I see Mr. Haken, followed by Dr. Collins.
Lisa, thank you for a very positive message. I think that what you delivered is definitely something that people should be listening to. I will say that, as I listen to the conversation, one of the things that I often hear is how we feel about something. And I think that feelings and reality sometimes are drastically separate. So I would concur with you that when you talked about the 1619 Project, that it has no business anywhere in our schools, except in the fiction area of the library, because it is fiction. It's written by someone that wants to make some points. It should be presented that way. It should never be presented as fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Collins?
Thank you. I actually agree with a tremendous amount of what you said at the beginning with the jobs. And I really think that this board, and I may make a statement to it later as well, that if we could focus less on the things that are so divisive to us and focus more on things that we could actually get something done with, like the Business Advisory Councils and the report card revisions and all of those things, I really think that we would be doing so much more for children in Ohio. That being said, I'm stuck on this critical thinking thing, too. And here's why. You know, I've always believed that the philosophy of education should be to teach kids how to think and not what to think. And that was how I approached teaching in my classroom. No one ever had a right or a wrong answer. It was just, could you defend it? And were your resources credible? You know, I was really open to kids having their opinions. But what happens when we're teaching kids to think critically and then they start to think for themselves, which is what they do, that's just part of the system? And then they question their parents' beliefs, you know, and they don't agree anymore. Having taught high school, that was something that, you know, those kids did all the time, was question their parents' beliefs. So I don't know how to rectify the idea of teach them to think critically, which is what I believe in as well, with the idea that in a room full of 26 kids, I can say one sentence and those kids are hearing it 26 different ways. And what they take home to their parents may not at all have been what I said in the classroom, but that's what they chose to take home to their parents. So when we have this generation of kids questioning their parents, and by all accounts, educators, I could ask for evidence of, you know, educators saying the things that you're saying they're saying. I'm not even worried about that right now. What I'm worried about is that if we focus on critical thinking, how do we teach parents, then, to be okay with their kids thinking critically? I don't know. I don't have an answer to that.
It's the critical stuff that they're kind of pounding into the kids' heads. I mean, we're going in places that parents really do not want us to go. So if you want to teach, you know, some of these different things, weird, well, different sexual... ...and all these different things, you know what? Let them do that after they graduate. And if they want to go into college and learn those special things, let them do that there. If they want to learn about some of the, you know, if the 1619 Project-type stuff, which I believe, you know, is just loaded with falsehoods, let them go to college and study that journalism. I just would not, I would be
And that, to me, that's the, I would call that the racism of low expectations, in my view. But I, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a question from Board Member Shea.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Cox. Thank you for being here. Good to see you, constituent from Green County, right?
Green County, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, welcome. I just wanted to make the point, I appreciate some of what Dr. Collins had to say, but we are seeing attempts to restructure, for instance, math standards that I think have the effect of kind of lowering, you know, kind of finding the lowest common denominator. That's what it amounts to. So it might not be as overt as Dr. Collins is suggesting, but I think in practice that we are seeing a movement in that direction. Different states and some of the announcements that have been made and the push we're seeing, particularly in math standards. So I just wanted to raise that point. But thank you again for being here and look forward to seeing you back in Green County.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Shea, could I ask just a clarifying question? Are you seeing that happening to math standards in Ohio or are you speaking generally?
Thank you, President Kohler. I'm not suggesting Ohio. I'm suggesting that there's a, generally, and that there's a national conversation in this direction. That's my suggestion.
I appreciate the clarification. Our next board member to speak will be Mrs. Hill.
Thank you, President Kohler, and thank you, Mr. Cox. I do want to follow up on the question that the president just asked of Mr. Shea. In April of 2021, there was an article in the Akron Beacon Journal titled "Change Agents: Stow Educational Consultant Aims to Bring Equity Empowerment to Math Class." And the featured person in that was a woman, her last name is Yoke, and she's the Director of the Ohio Council of Teachers of Math. And the, this is directly from the Akron Beacon Journal, whose two main goals right now are to support math teachers in learning and to promote policies and practices that support equity inclusiveness in math. And then further down, overrepresentation of white students and often Asian students. And in the lower tracks, we have an overrepresentation of students of color. And then further on the article, eliminating, tracking, and replacing it with student-focused, equity-centered, and reasoning-based math experience. So there is a proposal by someone who leads in the math community to make changes to math in Ohio. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. My question was really about the standards that this board is responsible for. So thank you for providing that example of what's happening in a district. Okay. Are there any other questions at this point? If not, sir, we will thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate your time and your ideas.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Certainly. The next item of business is that of public participation on non-voting agenda items. And again, as a reminder, individuals are not permitted to address the board on matters that have been or will be the subject of an administrative hearing, including territory transfer or personnel item actions. We do have one member who is going to testify this morning on non-voting agenda items, and it is our own former board member and colleague, Lisa Woods. Welcome, Lisa. And you already know this part about the five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. And good morning, board members. I miss working with you, and I'm pleased to be here today to offer public testimony on the topic of priorities. Ohio's education system is a feeder system into jobs and careers in higher education. Ohio has 100,000 jobs open, but there are too many Ohioans that lack the skills needed to fill those jobs. This is a true crisis, and I do hope that the board considers strongly listening to the consumer base and focus like a laser beam on the needs of our parents, students, and employers. Jobs and careers have been shifting overseas for years. One of the reasons for this shift is the lack of trained workforce. With billions of taxpayer dollars spent at the local, state, and federal levels for children K through 12, we simply have a responsibility to use those enormous resources to stem the tide. Experts predict a loss of 75 million jobs worldwide by the next year due to technology. From robot pizza delivery to driverless trucks displacing humans, even basic entry-level jobs are at risk. However, all is not doom and gloom. Our economy still needs people. So here are the priorities I would like, I would hope that ODE would push and suggest local boards of education to prioritize as well. Back to the basics. There is still nothing more important than a student's life as the basic skills of proper English skills, the ability to write and put together cohesive thoughts, mathematics of the traditional mode that relies on brain power, not computing. To encourage thought, science skills that allows students to comprehend and master the scientific method. Additionally, a consistent program of gymnastics to keep students sharp and in shape. In 2017, the Pentagon reports that 71% of young people are either physically or mentally unfit for the military. Think about that. Being prepared for the military is not significantly different than being prepared for college or work world. We have a problem that needs to be addressed. Second, only 36% of young people aged 18 to 24 were proud to be Americans, according to the polling from Technometrika Market Intelligence, conducted from June 30 through July 2. Compare that to 86% of adults over 65 who are proud to be Americans. It is not hard to realize that this is driving these disparities and sharp divisions and abnormalities. A focus on civic history and a return to the underpinnings of our country's history, understanding American exceptionalism and Western civilization are long overdue. While these topics have been either eliminated, marginalized, or tragically reinterpreted by Howard Zinn model of established anti-Americanism, the damage that these curricula in teaching are doing to American schoolchildren is profound. Employers are asking for much different priorities. Employers consistently state the obvious, that graduates lack the following: critical thinking or problem-solving, adaptability and flexibility, communication, leadership, innovation, and creativity. This is achievable. Critical thinking is fostered by robust teaching and challenging students, not feeding them a steady stream of false teachings about racial and human sexuality, being pounded into our kids' heads, causing them not to think straight and hate their country. Adaptability and flexibility means independence, not conformance. Communication means a command of the King's English and how to speak and write eloquently. Leadership is brought about through achievement and related to having high standards and challenging curricula, being physically and mentally fit. Innovation and creativity are fostered by having the basic building blocks as a starter. Let's allow students to think for themselves while teaching them without social and political agendas. Parents are flocking to school board meetings. They are taking aback that the priorities of our public schools foster hatred, division, false blame by breaking kids into camps. We are not of camps. We never had a caste system. We have the same opportunities. That is why we have a free system of public education, and each child learns to statewide standards. Education is supposed to be the great equalizer. Let us make it so again by a singular focus on basic and listening to the Ohio parents, students, and employers. These are my priorities. I hope they are yours, and I hope this fosters I hope they are yours, and I hope this fosters debate to listen to the parents and the employers of Ohio. Hear them and heed their call. Education can spark an Ohio renaissance or a new dark age. Let's follow the course of the renaissance.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Are there any questions for our guests today? Yes, Ms. Newman.
There we go. Thank you, President Kohler.
Thank you, Ms. Woods, for coming today to speak. I think one of the questions, I'm, I'm really putting on my active listening hat today, and I'm really trying to better understand what is being discussed and try to see if we can begin using some of the same language. Dr. Collins, I appreciated you, like, really looking at the definitions of words, you know, equity, equality. And so I want to reference one of the lines in your testimony that says, "Critical thinking or problem-solving, adaptability, flexibility, communication, leadership, innovation, and creativity are all achievable and necessary for Ohio students." And then I kind of want to put this next to Mr. Paquita's statement where I wrote it down, to where he said we need to talk about the real history of the state of Ohio. And so to me, these things come at each other from opposite angles, to where, who is the body that decides what is the real history? And how do we encourage our children to think critically, question things, be adaptable, and learn to have hard discussions about a variety of viewpoints? And I feel today's testimony has been incredibly challenging, but I appreciate the level of growth it can bring for each one of us as we listen and we can have these discussions about what works best for Ohio's children. But I do ask, when you say, "Let's allow students to think for themselves while teaching them without social and political agenda," how are we deciding on what doesn't have an agenda or does have an agenda? How do we allow our children to think critically if we don't give them the space to do so? And I feel like by giving a full and robust picture of history and not the right history with events left out, does not allow our children to achieve this. And so my question is, how do we allow for critical thinking if we really are saying we only want to teach a real history?
That's a big, a good and long question. We want to teach a real history. And there's historians that, that, you know, in white and black and of all nationalities that have criticized, you know, some of the things that are coming through with the 1619 Project and the implications of critical race theory. I mean, when you really dig, these are Marxists, these are mind-controlling, we are teaching our kids to conform, and that we're doing it in the way that we're teaching them. I absolutely support, you know, the, the, the teaching of real history, you know, that we had black soldiers fighting and how many that we had that, that fought, lived or died here in Ohio. I, I, I think that's incredible that we have to teach that, but we have to teach that with pride and, and, and to look back at what, where we have come to. And I would just say that I'm, I'm asking for real history. That does bring real thinking and debate. We don't want to tell them, one of the biggest problems that I'm seeing is that the way that we're teaching it is, is it's that we're starting to point fingers and put blame on certain people and races and things like that. And the truth is, here in Ohio, we came together. We came together and, and we, we, we voted Abraham Lincoln in and, you know, fought this war with, with people of, of all colors. And that's real history. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm starting to, you know, I, I, I think that is real history. It's just how you teach it. And don't teach it with blame and pointing fingers at one race or another. The kids today, that, you know, they, they, they have no fault of what any ancestors did at any time on the face of this world.
So thank you for clarifying on that. And I think that's the question I'm asking. Everything that's been brought up today in testimony is real history. Nobody's saying that that did not happen. But there's a lot of other things that happened, too.
There's some false history. There is absolutely false history, falsehoods that have been admitted by...
Can I complete my thoughts?
Yes.
Thank you. There are, there are parts of our history that we're not necessarily proud of, but that doesn't mean they're not real. And we can have honest discussions about those. And those, I, this idea that we're making people feel shame and blame, I think, is very unfounded.
Oh, it is founded.
I'm still speaking.
Sorry.
That I feel that our children and our teachers and our administrators have the ability and wherewithal to have honest and open discussions within our classrooms, to allow children the idea for critical thought while learning what our history looks like and talking about the things we're not proud of and making that not real, just because it makes us squirm a little bit, is not teaching real history. And so I feel like we can approach these topics, not make our kids feel shame and weird. And I, I just, I feel like it's not giving credit to our children, it is not giving credit to our teachers, and it is not giving credit to the work that is being done here. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Lisa, thank you for a very positive message. I think that what you delivered is definitely something that people should be listening to. I will say that, as I listen to the conversation, one of the things that I often hear is how we feel about something. And I think that feelings and reality sometimes are drastically separate. So I would concur with you that when you talked about the 1619 Project, that it has no business anywhere in our schools, except in the fiction area of the library, because it is fiction. It's written by someone that wants to make some points. It should be presented that way. It should never be presented as fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Collins?
Thank you. I actually agree with a tremendous amount of what you said at the beginning with the jobs. And I, and I really think that this board, and I may make a statement to it later as well, that if we could focus less on the things that are so divisive to us and focus more on things that we could actually get something done with, like the Business Advisory Councils and the report card revisions and all of those things, I really think that we would be doing so much more for children in Ohio. That being said, I, I'm stuck on this critical thinking thing, too. And, and here's why. You know, I've always believed that the philosophy of education should be to teach kids how to think and not what to think. And that was how I approached teaching in my classroom. No one ever had a, had a right or a wrong answer. It was just, could you defend it? And were your resources credible? You know, I, I was really open to kids having their opinions. But what happens when we're teaching kids to think critically and then they start to think for themselves, which is what they do, that's just part of the system, and then they question their parents' beliefs, you know, and they don't agree anymore? Having taught high school, that was something that, you know, those, those kids did all the time, was question their parents' beliefs. So I don't know how to rectify the idea of teach them to think critically, which is what I believe in as well, with the idea that in a room full of 26 kids, I can say one sentence and those kids are hearing it 26 different ways. And what they take home to their parents may not at all have been what I said in the classroom, but that's what they chose to take home to their parents. So when we have this generation of kids questioning their parents, and, and by all accounts, educators, I, I could ask for evidence of, you know, educators saying the things that you're saying they're saying. I'm not even worried about that right now. What I'm worried about is that if we focus on critical thinking, how do we teach parents, then, to be okay with their kids thinking critically? I don't, I don't know. I don't have an answer to that.
It's the critical stuff that they're kind of pounding into the kids' heads. I mean, we're going in places that parents really do not want us to go. So if you want to teach, you know, some of these different things, weird, well, different sexual genders and all these different things, you know what? Let them do that after they graduate. And if they want to go into college and learn those special things, let them do that there. If they want to learn about some of the, you know, if, if the 1619 Project-type stuff, which I believe, you know, has, is just loaded with falsehoods, let them go to college and, and study that journalism. I just would not, I would be just cautious of, of what we're teaching our kids. And don't pit them against their parents. It's obvious. It's been obvious that we are literally pitting our kids against their parents. I see it all the time. I see it all the time. And now our 20- and 30-year-olds often are calling their parents racist and not coming home for the holidays. It's really devastating. We didn't need to do that. And I, I, I think that we have to look at how we're teaching and the message. They need to know their math facts. I, I know kids that know much more about this racism, and they're, they're sick of it. They're, they make jokes about it, and it's, it's really coming across the wrong way. But they, they don't have quick addition and multiplication. They can't, you know, tell you, you know, the change from $20 when something's, you know, a certain amount of money and, and it's 20% off. They, they just don't have those things that we had when we were taught, you know, back in the 60s and the 70s, and then it started to decline, and especially in the 90s. Kids use calculators. And they, they, they just don't know their math facts quickly. It's, it's, it's just obvious when you get out there and buy things and the, if a cash register goes out.
Thank you very much. It's, it's always a pleasure to be able to engage in a discussion with especially someone who formerly served on this body. We have passed the 10-minute mark. We have two more people who would like to speak, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Sure. Oh, no, stay, Lisa, if you don't mind. We've got two more people who would like to ask you a question.
Gotcha.
We'll go first to Mr. Shay and then to Ms. Johnson, and then we will move on to our next agenda item.
Thank you, President Kohler. Mine are two comments, and I'll make them brief. The first is on the issue of, of history. I want to echo, and I really resonated with Member LaRue's comments before. What we focus on expands and increases. And focusing on what is positive and what is good and true, that will expand. You know, it's when, when we share, I'm, I'm a Christian, and sometimes Christians will share what happened in their past. And they do so not to dwell on the past, but to say, wow, look at, this is where I've come. And I think that's what we should be focusing on when it comes to history and being honest about our past, but with the mindset toward, this is how much progress we've made, and we, there's still more to go, but this is where we're going. I want to bring to highlight, I want to bring, highlight Dakota Sawyer. I don't believe he's here to publicly testify. Member Newman had said, you know, we, we don't want people to feel weird, you know, our, our kids and shamed and all of that. I think this is powerful testimony, which everyone should read. He talks about being a minority, and he says he's noticed that his teachers have said he's oppressed and that white people are oppressing him. He talks about his parents receiving a call and checking in with some of his white friends, and their, their parents didn't receive similar calls, asking for, if they need assistance and things like that, and felt that that didn't particularly make him feel very good. So I would encourage everyone to read that testimony. But I think the way this is being approached, kids are being made to feel weird and strange and, and shamed. So thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
And we'll conclude with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I also want to, I want to make one statement and then ask Lisa a question. We keep mentioning the 1619 Project, and I'm wondering how many people have actually read the whole thing. There are 18 essays in the 1619 Project. It seems the one that gets bounced around is the first one by Nikole Hannah-Jones. But there's 18 essays, and so I just want to put that out there. Lisa, you mentioned something very interesting. You said, "Parents are going home," no, excuse me, "Children are going home and calling their parents racist." Wouldn't, couldn't that be, couldn't that possibly be an example of the child thinking critically about what has been discussed in class, as opposed to a teacher saying to the child, "You're, you have a racist parent," you know? But couldn't it be that discussions that are going on in the classroom have caused the child to rethink the kinds of things that his or her parent has been saying or discussing around the table, and the child says, "Oh, something doesn't sound right. Let me go and question my parent about this"? Couldn't that possibly be an example of a child thinking critically instead of being indoctrinated by their teacher?
Absolutely. And I think there are literally racist parents out there. There's, there's no doubt about that. But there's racist, there's racists in all colors, right? I mean, there are, there are, you know, you know, men and women that have fought in wars, and they, they fought against a different culture, okay? So then they, you know, that, that is really hard to overcome. You know, they saw their buddies, you know, get killed, and they made it back alive. So, you know, sure, sure, that does happen. But I think now it's happening like in a very huge and broad way. And, and also, I think it's just absolutely wrong to teach children to disrespect their parents. We don't, we don't send them to school, you know, for this type of, you know, we want them to know their, their basic facts and be able to write. And honestly, a child should not criticize their, their, their parent until they're 18 and then they're out. And even now, I have a 90-year-old mother, and I just, I have so much respect for her and the way she raised me. I, I just will not criticize her. And, you know, I always treat her with respect, and I, I'll have an engaging conversation with her, but it's always, you know, very civil, just like in this room, right? So, because I, I honor, you know, my parents. But kids are coming home and being very, very disrespectful. I've heard a lot of stories, and I believe it's counselors and teachers in some places are actually coaching them to do this. I mean, I know, I, I have a good handful of, of real lifetime stories. I can and share, but, you know, we're running out of time, and I know that. But it is happening, and it's very disrespectful. And it's just, it's just fanning the flames of a lot of hatred, anger, and bringing these things up. We want to teach kids what they have. The first thing you want to do is, is tell them what, what God-given blessings that they have. And then, you know, I mean, to come right off and start teaching kids, you know, that, hey, you're black, you're oppressed, you're this and that, my gosh, that's a, that's a horrible way to start. Or, or any of these other things that are happening. And, and the 1619 Project does that, you know? It really does. So let's, let's give kids everything good that we know through K through 12. If some of these, if they want to go in the different direction into college, and they're willing to go and pay for that education or get a grant for that, you know, so be it. But please don't, don't, don't pit kids against their parents in K through 12. Teach them math. Teach them reading. You know, literacy is the ultimate social justice, right? So if, if, and these kids are not coming out, you know, reading. If we would take these, all this racism stuff that we're, the, the precious time, treasure, and everything we have on what we're talking about now and focused it on literacy, these kids could really excel without, you know, turning 18 and, you know, hating their parents.
Thank you, Mrs. Woods. I'm, I'm going to allow one more question, only because this board member has not asked a question yet. So, Mr. Poclar.
Thank you. I really appreciate your passion for, for these topics, and you're, you're so clear on, on what you think and believe in this space, and it's, it's commendable. I, I think, though, in listening to what you say, it, it points to me out the difficulty of getting, I mean, I think there, at the bottom of this, you are really interested in what's best for kids and families. But I think your testimony really speaks to how difficult this is for us, because a lot of the things you've said are so subjective. And so that's where the trouble is, right? How do you, how do you, how do we come to consensus on what the right way to go when everyone has a different opinion on subjective topics? You talk about real history, but your real history is different probably than everyone else's real history around the table. And, and each of us is our real history. What we would, if we had a, a class to put together, what we would pack into that class would all probably be different. You talk about kids having respect for their parents. I totally agree, but what is respect? I mean, the way I define it and the way you define it is totally different, probably. You know... You know, my kids disagree with me a lot, and they challenge me a lot. And I want that. I consider that to be respectful. It has to be done in a respectful way, but I want them to question me. I want them to have a conversation with me about these things. Some people, some parents may say, "It's, a child shouldn't question their parents until they're 18. That's, you know, I'm the adult, you don't get to..." And so how do we define what respect is? And I think that's where, I just see, that's our challenge. And to me, the solution to that on all of this stuff in the education world, that's why we have a local control system. That's why those communities at the smallest level possible get to decide what their values, how they define those subjective things, and hopefully with some guidance and some thoughts from this group. But we have to let that happen at the local level, and for us to sit here and talk about it and try to come up with solutions, it just, it's not going to work. I mean, we can't, we're never going to agree. And that's okay. But I do think we need to allow that to happen locally so those decisions can get made. And then, you know, you're going to have a district with thousands of people. Certainly, there's going to be families that disagree with the district, the decision of the group, and that's why we have school choice. That's why parents can then choose to send their kids somewhere else. And this constant focus of what can this board do to guide real history and respect from parents and all these big philosophical issues, we're never going to solve these things, just because I do think we agree in concept with the goal, but we all have a different way of getting there. And so we're never going to agree on that path. We just, we just won't, I don't think. So that's just my two cents.
It is a difficult task, and I was here, and so I know it firsthand, right? So I just want to, I just want to say that, you know, history is being taught differently in different districts, because we do have that autonomy here in Ohio. But I think we need some basic guidelines and then enforce them. If we try to micromanage, and that's what I see, I see a lot of micromanaging through the department, and, you know, we should really evaluate what the department's goal and job is, right? And make sure that we're doing the most fundamental things really, really well. And I think that we're going off into too much micromanaging, especially with the racism and the equity resolution. So I would, I would say, you know, turn this conversation to the things that people really want and need. The whole time I was on the board, I never, ever got a call or an email from somebody saying, "Hey, I really want my kid to understand that, you know, you know, all this," well, basically all the stuff that we're doing. I never had a parent say, "Hey, I want my kid to know that he's oppressed. That's really important. I want my teachers in this school to teach my kids that they're oppressed." I mean, who says that?
Thank you, Lisa. I have some major eye contact going on around this room. I'm going to suspend my own rule here for two more speakers. Dr. Miranda, Mr. Hagan, you have the last word. Nobody look at me after John finishes talking.
Mine is brief. I just want to say to Eric, "Thank you and amen."
That's awesome, because mine was for Eric also, not for Lisa. I'm with your kids, Eric.
Oh, that wasn't so bad. Thank you very much, Lisa. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. It's good seeing you all.
Well, before we move off of public participation, I want to draw your attention to the fact that we have people who submitted written testimony, and you'll find that in your board books, and they will be, that testimony will also be included as part of our Board Minutes. And I wanted to thank Diane Nelson, Dakota Sawyer, Robert Owens, Karen Kiefer, Julie Womack, Deb Wittemann, and Evan Stewart for your testimony.